It's time I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission to order. And I think Commissioner Uribe has arranged an invocation for us.
May I invite my pastor, Pastor Marisha, to do our invocation, that's all right? Good evening. Let us pray. Let us invite our friend and dear God to this meeting. Eternal God, we come before you imploring your presence in this meeting. We thank you for all the blessings we have received from you. We plead that your grace may continue to abound in us. Bless especially our country and its inhabitants and all who are in authority. Let your glory dwell in our land that mercy and truth, righteousness and peace may everywhere abound. We commend to you carry all our schools and ask that you grant our children may grow in useful knowledge and virtue and bring forth wholesome fruits of life. Save us from violence, discord and confusion, from pride and arrogance and from every course of evil action. Make us who come from many nations with many different languages a united people. Defend our liberties and give those who we have entrusted with the authority of government the spirit of wisdom that they might be justice and peace in our land. When times are prosperous, let our hearts be thankful and in troubled times do not let our hearts fail to trust you. Lord, a host, stretch for your almighty arm to strengthen our protective women and men who serve in the armed forces of our country. Give them courage and loyalty that in all things they may be served honestly and without reproach. We pray especially this day for those deploy in foreign soil, separated from their loved ones. Watch over them and defend both them and their loved ones during this time. Eternal Lord, ruler of all, graciously regard those who have been set in positions of authority among us. We ask especially for our mayor and city council here in Harlingen, for the police department, for the fire department and all the city staff, that they may be guided by your spirit, be high in purpose, wise in counsel, firm in good resolutions, responsive in their duties, that under them we may govern quietly and peacefully. We pray all this in Christ's name, who has died for all of us, who united us through the cross. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, especially a special welcome to our school board member, Eladio Hamas. Eladio, thank you for being here. And Deputy Superintendent Julio Cavasus, Julio, thank you for being here as special guests. And thank you to everybody for being here at our meeting. We welcome you. Happy New Year. Meeting has been called to order and the first item on the agenda is citizen communication.
I have Robert Luttwich, City Manager's contract.
Mayor, Commissioner, my name is Robert Luttwich, reside at 909 East Parkwood. First of all, I just wanted to say that I've just paid my property taxes for last year. That included the 12.19% increase that you guys imposed on the citizens of Harlingen, the historic largest in the history of Harlingen tax increase. And I just wanted to give you, offer you an observation as I was paying, there were people, most of the people there were trying to make payment arrangements. As I just saw that and saw the struggle in their eyes and their voices of having to pay the higher and higher taxes that we seem to endure every year because we're not managing. And I just, I just pray that you folks will be more connected to the community and understand that the community is impoverished. We spend, you know, there's failed economic policies in the community. We spend tax money instead of on economic development, we spend it on subsidized housing. We subsidize retail jobs that don't have a good income, that don't, you know, use car lots like the Boswell-Lef Venture. But anyway, having said that, I just wanted to say that, I wanted to also talk about the City Manager's contract. And I wanted to say that, you know, that the details, you know, the devil's always in the details. And what we've read here over the weekend in the second article that came out regarding the for cause termination for the city manager within the contract, that requires four votes and mayor, your consent. Anybody that would, that would, would put that in a contract that says that if a man or a city manager is convicted of a felony or something like that, nature requires more than a simple majority to oust that city manager? I think that there's a reversed logic in this. First of all, if he's, if he's ousted with three votes and he gets his annual salary of $260,000 a year, to me, the citizens of Harlingen should, should come first. That's where you need that fourth vote. That's where you need that mayoral consent. Not if a man is convicted of abuse of office or some kind of a felony conviction. Mayor, Commissioners, you guys have failed the citizens. If you don't reverse that and address that clause.
Thank you for your time.
And I'll end.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, Mayor, there's Hesul Batza, Public Works, Public Enforcement.
Please state, state your name and your residence address, please.
My name is Hesul Batza. I live on Brilaf Street. The address is on, on the paper. I live between Matt's and Lou 499. What I'm here is two years ago, a truck parked right in front of my house on the curb. When he left, it was kind of muddy. He made a pile about 30 inches high of mud. The reason the mud was there, because no sweeper went through there for two years. So next, next day, they came in and brought dump trucks, cleaned, they brought a whole bunch of crew, took a whole bunch of trucks out of their mud from the street. And I asked them there, how come you don't sweep? This is because we only have one sweeper, the other two are in the shop all the time. Hundred percent. I talked to Mr. Uribe, he says, call the Public Works, and he told me that there's two more swepers coming in. He promised me to go, he was gonna go over there, nobody has. Right now, the grass between the curb and there is about six inches and the mud is still there. They haven't been there in two years since that time, they were not there. And that's one of the reasons I'm here for. I don't know when they're gonna go and clean it.
Mr. Sanchez will meet with you after the...
Okay, I did call three times to Mr. Sanchez, he never returned my call.
Okay, well, he'll be available to you?
No, sir, I even came downstairs here to talk to him and they told me he was not available.
He'll be available to you immediately after the meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I have something else there if you mind.
Okay.
Code enforcement. I went over to talk to Manny about the lots and he's told me, sir, I don't have the equipment and the manpower, because I only have one tractor and one man. The man is sick, he's hurt. I said, I got two subcontractors paying right now to do the work. I said, do you approach the commission? Are you guys aware that you don't have the equipment and the manpower to do that? Clean the lots? Mr. Serra?
We can't respond to an item that's not on the agenda, sir, I'm sorry.
We can't talk to you after?
But we will have, I will have them to...
Yes, I said, I told Manny, I said, can you bring it to the commissioners and the mayor? He says, well, I can't do it. I said, well, your supervisor, I don't know if he talked to his supervisor or not.
So when, so during, because this is not an item that's on the agenda, we can't really discuss the item.
Okay.
But we can't, you can tell, you can tell us your concerns and we're, and we'll listen to them. And now what we're, what we can tell you is that you can meet with the assistant city managers, one or both of them, after the meeting.
Small city like us, we have two assistant city managers?
If you want to stay here, the meeting won't last very long. All right. Nope, is that it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, sir. The next item on the agenda is consideration possible action regarding the participation of the mayor and the city commissioners in the 2020 It's Time Texas Community Challenge and sign the challenge pledge. Javier?
Yes, Mayor, City Commissioner, good evening. It's that time again, and we, we are requesting that the mayor and each individual city commissioner sign a pledge. Each pledge is worth 500 points. Currently, we're in first place. We have 1,305,100 points. The next community is FAR which has 744,800. And one thing that I wanted to make, whoever participates in the public aware of is that when you do register on It's Time Texas, make sure that you click on that you're gonna participate with the school district, because the school district also gets those points. And so currently, the school district is behind the competitor, right? And so we want to, we want to gain first place with the school district and the city again this year. And so I asked City Commission for their pledge for It's Time Texas 2020, and we can bring home the first place trophy one more time.
All right. This is, this is an action, this is an action item, so I think it would be nice to have the commission approve the community, approve the community challenge and agree to sign the pledges. Somebody wants to make...
Make a motion to approve the community challenge.
Also, you take a picture of each one of you with...
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? So this is a fun challenge and we've won the, City of Harlingen's won the challenge the last two years in our, in our city group, and actually done pretty well even compared to some of the larger metros and larger cities. And the school district has won it, but there's a very important purpose behind it and that's to raise awareness within our community to try to get people fit and healthy and active, to reduce childhood obesity and, and diabetes, which is at epidemic levels, and to encourage the healthcare industry, business and local governments to work together to, to raise this awareness, to, to try to get our communities healthier and fit. And so I announced that the schools kickoff, and I worked out 173 times last year and 189 times the year before, so my goal is 200, 200 times this, this year. And I'll challenge everybody here for that. I'm gonna sign my pledge right, right now.
Can you define workout?
Thirty minutes to 60 minutes where you end up, where you end up sweating, where you end up, you have to break a sweat.
Hey, that's a good meal right there.
You have, you have to break a sweat.
Are we taking pictures with it? Can I see? Can you see any behind us?
Okay, so everybody's signed their pledge, hold it up so that everybody can take our picture.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank you. This is also part of, kind of works into our all-American city goal, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item two is presentation by Michael Kestner, Chief of Police regarding the duties and functions of the police department. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. This is a snapshot overview of the police department. And one thing I will point out that should any of you want to come over and get a full and in-depth view, you're more than welcome to. I know Commissioner Uribe has been over a few times, so we appreciate everybody coming by. All right? So that being said, yeah, the police department. So we have a total of 134 sworn authorized positions. Now, as per ordinance, we do have the ability to hire up to 12 over hires, we'll say, as long as their salaries are reimbursed by other entities. So, for example, right now, we have nine, we have seven with the school district as SROs, and then two more with Tropical Texas as MHOs. So really, at this point, we could hire up to 143. Now, that being said, our current staffing level, we're down seven, so that's where we're at right now. Civilian staff, we have 43 civilian personnel that work for us, and of course, we couldn't do our job without them. So total is 186 employees. Of course, there's me, I have Assistant Chief Miriam Anderson, and then the three deputy chiefs, Hector Leal, Danny Vieti Al and Alfredo Alvar. Primarily, the sworn staff is divided into three bureaus, which are the Criminal Investigations Division, Support Services and Patrol Division. Now Patrol's the largest, they have 75 officers total with the supervisory staff. Then comes Criminal Investigations, that has 40 sworn, and then the Support, which has another 15 and takes care of all the needs. Of course, obvious Patrol and Criminal Investigations, what they do. Support Services handles all our training, maintenance of the fleet, all the behind the scenes stuffs that you really don't see, that our civilians don't do. So with the civilian staff, our 43 are broken down to we have 20 communications positions, and really, that's the heart, the communication center runs 24/7 as well. We have our six record staff, eight working for the jail. The one little difference there is the jail is actually supervised by a sworn sergeant as opposed to the others that have civilian supervisors. We have an evidence tech, two info technology or computer people. Our graffiti eradication position, that guy does an awesome job for what he does, whatever. And I know there's been a couple recently that we pointed out to him, he goes out and paints over the graffiti, keeps the city nice and clean. And I can make, he does a great job. And we have a crime victims liaison, and then we have four in the administrative area that take care of our needs. Of course, retention and recruitment's a big thing. We've done several pushes over the years. Like I said, we're currently down seven, but we also have interviews, in fact, tomorrow for 13, we're trying to fill those seven positions, hopefully we can. But this is always a big push for us to keep positions going. At one point, I think it was last year, we were fully staffed, but it's amazing how the turnover happens. So the police department budget, it's broken down into two different sections. The operations section is basically the sworn officers and, and then our expense accounts are commodities and contractuals, pays the bills, electric, water, fuel, all those things. And then the services side, again, that's the civilian side with their salaries and benefits and any expenses on that side. So the total operating budget for the police department's, well, 14.7 million roughly. We have several active grants right now. This is the ones that we're working to get together. A lot of them tend to be hourly wage type grants, especially with the step, those are through Tech Stop for enforcement. And then we have a couple equipment grants, including rifle resistant body armor and the Homeland Security Grant in which we're buying some other equipment, some radios with it. This is how we divide the city up, we have 10 patrol districts. Adam 1 through Adam 5, and then Baker 1 through Baker 5. As officers come on duty on patrol, they're assigned to each one of these districts. Since we changed some hours last year, where we went from 10-hour shifts down to 8-hour shifts, we now have usually 10, 12, 13 officers per shift working the streets. So every district's filled, and then we usually have a couple extra where we put in the hotspot areas and target crime that way. But that way, if you know where you live, then you know which district you're in. Our fleet, we have 104 total units. Of course, largest percentage of them are marked with our patrol cars, motorcycles and the other marked cars. We also have some specialty units with, we've all seen the Corvette, we have that four-by-four truck that we'll bring out for community events, MRAP, Humvees and our mobile command vehicles. And then, of course, the other unmarked ones for administrative and CID use. We have our SWAT team made up of the staff there. They're part-time, they train twice a month, and the makeup is basically this, this would be their, their chain of command. There are 16 operators with the three sergeants, a commander and a deputy chief, and of course, ultimately comes up to me for any decisions. And they're available 24/7 for major incidences, or as we did recently, we had a mutual aid agreement with Cameron County SWAT. Accreditation. So in 2013, the Harlingen Police Department became accredited through Texas Best Practices, their law enforcement recognition program. At the time, we were the 85th city in the state out of roughly 2,500 agencies. So basically, we agree and we maintain the standards set forth by that program, which are, there's about 168 standards. Every four years, we have to get reaccredited. We did so in 2017, and we're already working towards our reaccreditation in 2021. We are also the only valley city that is accredited at this time. Now, there's two others, I think it's FAR and Alton that are working on their accreditation. Community events is of course a big deal for the police department, Run With The Heroes and our barbecue cook-off, barbecue of our biggest. And we have the Shop With A Cop, which most of you were at recently, National Night Out. And then we have several additional events that we partake in or participate in, either with security or, you know, helping out on all these events. Of course, with the marathon coming out, we'll be out there to make sure all the runners are safe. So crime reporting, ultimately, that's what your police department is here for, is to reduce crime in the city. This will be the second year, I say this, 2019 was the second year we're under the NiBRS crime reporting system, which is national incident-based reporting system. Prior to that, we're under the uniform crime reporting. As you can see, quite a difference under UCR, we only had to report really seven different types of crime. We're under the NiBRS system, it's 52 different crimes. And a lot more goes into that. I apologize, I wanted to have all the 2019 numbers finished and ready for this presentation, didn't quite get there, but I should have that done shortly, and we'll be presenting a whole annual report for, for your, for everyone to look at. But for 2019, these were some of the stats, we had 60,000 calls for service, over 14,000 traffic stops and 2,800 arrests. Those arrests are all male, female and juvenile, and that's all a total. And then new for this year, we are actually, have agreed to co-host the Texas Police Games with South Padre Island PD. It's a pretty big venue, they get about 1,500 participants plus their families to the area, so we're expecting a pretty good crowd. These are some of the events we will be hosting here, and it's open to not just police, but all first responders, fire EMS, dispatchers, active military and even retired military, if their job was law enforcement in the military, they can participate also, and they can have guests participate. So it's a pretty big deal. It happens the second week in June there, 7th through the 13th, and we're pretty deep in coordinating all that. And that's a basic overview, any questions you have for me?
Anybody have any questions? All right, well, anybody? Thank you for that presentation, Chief. Congratulations to you and the department for doing such a great job. I am really very impressed with the accreditation that HPD went out and received and started getting about eight years ago, and I think it's fantastic that you all go the extra mile to set yourselves up to a higher standard than most other cities in the state of Texas. And I think that's to be commended. Thank you for all that you do and to keep our city safe. We live in a safe, we live in a safe community, it's because of the men and women of our Harlingen PD and your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item three is the approval of the minutes of the special meeting of October 22nd and the regular meeting of December 18th, 2019. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Consent agenda, items 4A through C, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item five is a public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated N district to general retail GR district for 9.778 acres out of lot 13 and block, and 14, block 133, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located southwest corner of FM 509 and East Treasure Hills Boulevard. Advocate is Mini Criado.
Mayor, City Commissioner, good evening. We have a zoning request to General Retail District along FM 509 at the corner with Treasure Hills Boulevard. It's a, as you can see, it's a triangular shaped property, more, the most frontage is on FM 509 with also some frontage on Treasure Hills Boulevard. The adjacent zoning, the property is not zoned at this time. The property to the northeast is also not zoned. To the west is zone, General Retail District, and to the north is multifamily, and to the south and southeast is San Benito ETJ. Here's an aerial photograph of the property, it's mostly agricultural land all around. Like I said, it has a lot of frontage along FM 509. Here's a picture of the property, it's suitable for commercial development. In the land use plan, it's designated as mixed use development, so it's compatible with the designation in the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the zoning request. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a public hearing last week during their regular meeting, and no one spoke in opposition to the zoning request, and they recommended approval unanimously.
Sir, this has nothing to do with the, the previous one, right? It's a whole separate project?
Separate. It's a commercial development, no disclosures yet on anything specific. They will have to subdivide and extend utility lines to the property, but nothing...
But it's not staging or heavy trucks or anything?
No, no staging.
This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this rezoning. Anyone, I'd like to speak for or against the rezoning. Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone from not designated N district to general retail GR district for 9.77 acres out of lot 13 and 14, block 133, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located at the southwest corner of FM 509 and East Treasure Hills Boulevard. Ask the city attorney to read the caption, please.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezone from not designated N district to general retail GR district for 9.778 acres out of lot 13 and 14, block 133, San Benito Land and Water Company subdivision located at the southwest corner of FM 509 and East Treasure Hills Boulevard, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to adopt the ordinance on first reading, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, motion carries. Item six, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow foster care residential facility in a light industry allied district located at 2032 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of lots 14 and 15, block 2, EB Adams subdivision. Advocate Gal Curry on behalf of Hands of Healing Residential Treatment Center.
Yes, this property is along Business 77, just east of K Street, Commerce Street is half a mile to the, to the west. The zoning is a light industrial district with multifamily zoning to the north. This property is already developed, it has existing buildings. This company is already working there, and they're using this building for offices, and they would like to use this building to house kids that need foster, foster homes. And you have businesses and agricultural land surrounding it. Here's a bird's eye view, like I mentioned, this is an existing building that they're using for office work to get the kids to the, to the homes. But while they find homes for the kids, they would like to house them in this building And this is a floor plan of what they would like to do in that building. Staff recommends approval of the SUV, subject to conditions, one, that is that they get the proper state and city permits, and they meet all the requirements by the planning, building inspections, environmental health, fire prevention and police department. During the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting of last week, no one is speaking, no one spoke. one spoke in opposition to the SUP request. Also, no other department expressed any opposition to the request, and the commission recommended approval, subject to the requirements unanimously.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I'll go to item A, which is a public hearing. Is there anyone like to speak for or against this special use permit? Is there anyone? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is the consideration possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a special use permit to allow a foster care residential facility in a light industry district located at 2032 and 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing legal description of lots 14 and 15, Block 2, EB Adams Subdivision, subject to, one, obtain and maintain proper state permits; two, compliance with the requirements administered by the planning and development, building inspections, environmental health, and fire prevention departments prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. All right, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody, anyone have any discussion? Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, the motion carries. Item seven, consideration possible action to amend the existing contract with Texas Department of State of Health Services to accept a grant amount of $135,123 and allocate $100,000 to the novel vector control project, and $35,123 to the traditional vector control, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. This is just an amendment to the original contract we had approved last year, so it's just receiving additional funds for the program. We ask that you approve, receiving additional money.
All right. Anybody have any questions about this? We want to control mosquitoes, so let's, let's agree, let's keep this program going.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion, second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, the motion carries. Item A, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I have none.
Any board appointments?
I have two. I have Dr. Delora Davids to the Harlingen Community Development. Actually, it's a re, we're gonna reapprove her. And then I have Norma Inohosa-Pollet to the Senior Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, the motion carries. Item A, board appointments, are there any board appointments?
I have none.
I have none.
Any board appointments?
I have two. I have Dr. Delora Davids to the Harlingen Community Development. Actually, it's a re, we're gonna reapprove her. And then I have Norma Inohosa-Pollet to the Senior Advisory Board.
Is there a motion to approve the board appointments?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign, the motion carries. Item nine, is it executive closed session, attorney consultation presented Section 551.0712, Texas Government Code, to receive legal advice regarding Project Dream. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're in executive session to consult with our attorney, but we'll be back. There may be action on this item when we return. Welcome, Rick Anderson with UTRGV. Thanks for being here tonight, Rick. We're out of executive session at 6:39. Item 10 is consideration and appropriate action, if any, to authorize the city manager to execute all relevant documents pertaining to the transfer of certain real property to UTRGV and furtherance of the objectives of Project Dream.
Mayor Commissioners, after several months of working with Rick and his team at UTRGV and with the school district, we do have the donation deed and interlocal agreement. The interlocal agreement would be between the City of Harlingen, UTRGV, and the school district, HTISD, and the donation deed would be between the City of Harlingen and UTRGV, and staff is recommending that we approve both documents, execute them, authorize the mayor to sign them, so that we can move forward with the construction of a new university campus here in Harlingen, which is an exciting thing for us. It's gonna be fantastic for not only our kids, but future generations, and we know that UTRGV will do a great program, as they have over in Edinburgh and everywhere else, so staff is recommending approval of both documents.
Motion to approve, as discussed in executive session.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Yay. Great job, everybody. All right, that concludes our meeting tonight. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.